All right, it's six o'clock, so let's go ahead and get started. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Jeff, roll call please.
Sorry, mine in here says 8:02, so I was not prepared. I've got to get the next one before we start.
Yeah, we really can't go by that either, but you know, we kind of all go by our phone, our phone, our computer or our phone is kind of what we go by. But that is funny, my computer's saying 6:02 and my phone's 6:01, and so huh. We're all good.
Okay, just about there.
Okay?
Okay, you're ready to go.
Yep, roll call.
Jeremy Ragland.
Jeremy Ragland, present.
Mary Jean Kirchner.
Mary Jean Kirchner, present.
Mitch Magnus.
Mitch Magnus, present.
Larry Phillips.
Larry Phillips, present.
Phil Boswell.
Phil Boswell, present.
Robert Goulet.
Robert Goulet, present.
Joel Williams.
Joel Williams, present.
Wayne Towne.
Wayne Towne, present.
You have four.
Okay, thank you. Wayne, would you lead us in the prayer, please?
Everybody stand, please. Our gracious family, Father, Lord, need to come to you this evening to say thank you. Thank you for the city of Harrison, the citizens and residents of you. Lord, we want to say thank you for this board that's sitting on the table tonight and your willingness to do work for the city of Harrison. Lord, if we go forth and appear to the city tonight, we just ask for your guidance and reactions in everything that we do. Get with us, guide us throughout this week, be with our helper employees when they work this week, and we just want, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, be seated, please. Okay, we, we need to approve two sets of minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 28th, please?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, a motion to approve February 4th, please.
Motion.
Got a motion, Mary Jean, and a second by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you. Let's jump into Chris Grady. Chief, how are you today?
I'm well, how are y'all?
Good.
All right. I apologize, the monthly report did not go through electronically, and I will get that email to those that normally get it that way. I've made hard copies for those that normally look at hard copies here. Real quick, we'll go through that, starting, this, of course, is January's report. We're always a month behind here, so accidents worked was 25, same period last year was 36. Citations issued was 131 in the, this year, and it's 243 for same period last year, or year-to-date last year. Warnings issued was 540 this year, same period last year is 482. DWIs, we had five this year, and last year we had four. Notice the calls for service, 1501 for this year and 1567 year-to-date last year. We'll flip the page, school resource officers. Can look that over, we had five counseling sessions with students, we had four with parents, we had four with faculty. Down there at the bottom, we had some training hours, a little more than normal during school. Of course, they were out of school some for the virtual class, so some of the guys got some of their training in on those days they were out. We actually utilized our SROs, they helped us a lot the week that it snowed. Since school was out, they all come to work and, and helped patrol. Next page is the warrant division, we served 263 warrants in January, 60 physical arrests, we collected $465 in warrant service fees. Next page is animal control, animal control answered 61 calls, we have zero animals at the, at the dog pound right now. Next page is, is the starting page, one of three pages, if you'll turn over to the second page, at the very bottom, that shows the number of cases worked and the number of cases closed. January of 2020, they worked 51, they closed 30 this year, they worked 21 and closed 35, so. And if you'll, the next page is a narcotics page that we really don't use anymore since we have the own narcotics division, we have a page on the back for that. Monthly community engagement officer activity, she had six contacts with local businesses, 10 public safety announcements, seven assist the schools, and she had 31 visits to the Harrison schools assisting the SROs, and she contacted 2,100 different people through those activities. The last page is narcotics for January, the drugs seized was methamphetamine, marijuana, THC wax, which is the narcotic found in marijuana, and then heroin again, and kratom and some pills. There's the weights of each, the total value of all that was seized was $29,740, we had 10 misdemeanor arrests and 16 felony arrests. Cash, $3485 in cash was seized, and then there's some paraphernalia at the bottom that was seized also, taken off the street. Anybody have any questions of the monthly report? All right, this is on, down in the agenda, do we need to get approval to move?
Yeah, Mary Jean.
Mary Jean, the retirement of K-9 Jerry, can we do that now?
We'd like to go ahead and cover that now, if that's okay.
Yes.
All right, first, first item of business is K-9 Jerry's worked almost six years, five years and 10 months, which five to seven years is about the length of any service dog as far as them working. K-9 Jerry belongs to the city of Harrison, and I need a motion from the council to approve that we allow Jerry's owner, John Morgan, to become his permanent owner-owner and release all liability of Jerry from the city on March 9th, 2021.
So we have a motion by Bill Boswell, second by Joel. Any further discussion about K-9 Jerry? Okay?
I will say again, to make this a comment in the committee, a lot of people might not think that that is valued as a tax money that's spent for that, and they're wrong. It's one of the best programs and services that we have in the department.
Well, I will say this, thank you, Councilman, for that remark, and I will say this, and I can't say anymore about it because it's ongoing investigation, but if we had not had a K-9, let's just say in the last few weeks, we would have lost a major dealer because they know their rights. He refused consent. At that point, if we don't have a K-9, we say, have a nice day, and we didn't. We actually used the K-9, he alerted, and we got a substantial amount of methamphetamine and money and three guns off a drug dealer. If we hadn't had a K-9, we'd have come right on into town, so.
You didn't have the money to buy your replacement?
Yeah, we've already had that, we did. Hang on a minute, John? I want y'all to meet K-9 Jerry and his handler, Officer John Morgan.
John Morgan. Hey, John! Buddy!
And at this time, I want to present John and K-9 Jerry with his plaque. Are you going to need the plastic off for that? We's going to leave it on, but, well, here, hang on, we'll take it off. All right, I'll read this real quick. It's a Harrison Police Department plaque, it says, Police K-9 Jerry, retirement after five years and 10 months of loyal and dedicated service to his partner and handler, Officer John Morgan and the citizen of Harrison. May 4th, 2015, to March 9th will be his last day, and that is 2021, so congratulations.
Congratulations, Ron!
Officer Morgan, I assume that you consider this part of your family?
Yes, sir, no doubt.
So is your family. That's good.
He's supposed to be outside.
That's great.
While we're waiting, can you tell us one thing that you remember distinctly about serving with this service animal?
Well, I know over the years that I've got to use Jerry, we have seized a lot of narcotics and numerous vehicles and money that would have been used in illegal activities. I don't have one particular because every night with this dog has been amazing. He's, he's really-
Can you check a couple warrants for us?
He's a really good dog. I know every time I go and get him certified, because we have to get the dog certified every year through the state, it doesn't matter what certifier it is that's certified my dog, he is always, they always want him. So I've been offered plenty of times to trade dogs or something.
And I would assume that when, when you bring that dog out, there's immediate response in every situation, isn't there?
Oh, absolutely.
Whether it's a criminal or a citizen or whatever.
Jerry is quite unique in the K-9 field, that is, as far as law enforcement. He has a switch, and he knows when to flip that switch. He's great around kids, they'll let kids love on him, pet on him, he'll roll over on his stomach and let you scratch his belly, but when it's time to go to work, he flips that switch, and he's a completely different dog.
I've seen this dog in whatever, full run, whatever you want to call it, he is coming after a man, and when he gets that man, he gonna bite him. And the guy turns around, I give up. The dog is fixing the body, and John gives the command, that dog just circles around and comes right back. I mean, I was amazed. I mean, that's, it's something, I hate that we gotta go with him, but I mean, that's, that's, that's part of a dog's life, we don't want to just work until we have to put him down, so. He'll be part of John's family, and I'm sure he'll be treated very well, so. We already have a new dog, we actually had a new dog before we retired Jerry, and we're in the process of getting another K-9 next month. We're getting Officer Jonathan Murphy will be our new K-9 officer, and he will go, leave in March to go train with his new K-9, so. But anyway, I want to give you that. Anybody got any questions of John? Oh, yeah, Mary Jean's got some.
I wish you'd retire without a gift. Good job, Jerry.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, John.
Thank you, John, thank you very much.
Tell Ron to come in. I've been wanting to do this too for a while, but because of COVID and everything, I've not. I've got several officers that I'd like to recognize for different things, and I've mentioned that to you before, and once we get free of COVID and mask and all that, we'll, we'll do that, but. Ron, are you out there?
Yes, sir.
Come on in. All right, this is our newest K-9, this is Baddie, it's B-A-D-Y. He is a Belgian Malinois, Belgian Malinois, and he's pretty hyper. This is, this is Officer Ryan Duffy, and he's taken on the duties of K-9 handler. We hope to get six years out of this dog, and, well, he was the dog that I mentioned a while ago that got the large amount of narcotics that we wouldn't have got, he's the one that actually got it, and that was just in the last few days. But anyway, that's Baddie, and he's, he's doing a good job for us.
How old is he? 22 months. I got him when he was 13, 14 months?
And I'd just like to say that the prosecutor and attorney's office has helped us with some financial deals with, with our K-9s also, as far as care and stuff, and I appreciate Prosecutor Etheridge and his office and some of the things they've done, but, well, like I said, we've already made the purchase on the new K-9, and he will be here hopefully by the end of March, so we'll try to bring him in maybe in April or something. But anyway, all right.
What's that training done?
They never quit training. The initial time they go is anywhere from two to six weeks. They match, they match the dogs with a handler. That's, that's the way that, to my understanding of K-9, I was actually a K-9 trooper back when I was with state police, and they done it the same way then, they brought dogs in and whoever, whatever handler it worked with, they match them up that way, but we've already had Officer Murphy go down, and there's been like five dogs, and Captain Tolliver went with him, would you quit licking me? Captain Tolliver went with him, and he said it was just automatic. Jonathan and the dog we're getting, what's his name?
Zephyr.
Zephyr?
Zephyr.
Not come up with any worse names for me to pronounce, Baddie and Zephyr. Anyway, Zephyr, I mean, they just hit it off, so. The dog will be trained in narcotics, he'll be trained in tracking, he'll be trained in article, and then, well, they call it bite work now.
Apprehension.
Okay, apprehension, so if we have to, somebody's running that we need to catch, we can't catch him, they can.
I don't understand.
Beg your pardon? He was not, we got him out of-
Charlestown, Pennsylvania.
Yeah, but what's the name of the kennel?
Shallow Creek.
Shallow Creek Kennels in Pennsylvania. We're actually going to Sherwood, Arkansas, two reasons, one, I needed him to go back up for some research training, and I mean, what is that, a hell of a ticket up there?
About 14 hours.
Yeah, 14-hour drive, so. Called a buddy of mine at state police, it's actually over the K-9 troops here in Arkansas, and I was asking about their dogs, they actually picked their dogs up straight off the boat in Virginia Beach, but he said one of the best K-9 trainers he put me onto was down in Sherwood, and that's where Officer Murphy is getting his dog from. And the benefit of that is, every- First and third Tuesday? What'd I tell you? Yeah, first and third Tuesday, from here, as long as the dog's in surface, they can drive to Sherwood, Arkansas, and train with the original K-9 trainers twice a month. So, I mean, we can actually go back and, and the professional trainers are trained, so, and that's something we can do at this point. And they provide little raw dogs, little flawed dogs, several agencies in Arkansas they provide dogs for, so I just thought that was a more-
All right, Chief, Mary Jean.
When they go back for retraining, did they go back to original trainer or?
No, they get certified in Arkansas every year, they get recertified in Arkansas, but as far as training goes- They'll train every third?
We train every?
Well, we, we train, yeah, we train a couple times a week, but they, we give them a whole day of nothing but training, working on different, the different skills with their dogs.
I see serious debate, you need to go back to-
Okay, so.
I won't have to go back to Pennsylvania now.
We've had a motion.
I think it passed, didn't y'all do that?
No, no, we had a motion and a second, we still need to, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, now we have.
So we've already done that, I'm sorry. All right, any other questions, guys?
We're good, thank you, Chief.
Thank y'all, appreciate it.
Thank you, Officer. Thank you, Beatty, Beatty?
Baddie. I couldn't understand why Chief Grady has a problem pronouncing Baddie.
Yeah, I know, that's a good point.
And I said it looks like Beatty.
Yes, all right. Thank you, thank you, and I think Wade is no longer with us, is that correct, Jeff? Now I see him back, Wade is back, I think he's got a soccer tournament tonight, so. Go ahead, Wade.
Yeah, I've got a couple things I do, I want to make the council on, after the weather last week, we did have one of our child cubs who's pretty well-bound, I think it's always time to, to kind of tie that one, so just kind of give you a heads up next month, I'll probably be bringing a proposal to go ahead and get it on board, and we found a couple of them, we'll be ready to get them next month, and we just ordered one now, I think we've been waiting for. Hopefully we're done with COVID, but I feel like this might be one of those years we get a, we get one in March next year, so, kind of want to give you a heads up on that. And then, if you want to go over real quickly, some information I said earlier this week about the DOT statewide transportation and streetwork program, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, do you remember? Do you guys see my screen?
We can, yes.
These are projects that are in that draft improvement program that's put out by the DOT that are located within Boone County. They're six-way improvement projects, if anyone has pulled out that four of those are actually located within the city limits. So Highway 65 intersection improvements are similar in nature, that's going to target the intersection at full drive, tester, and raw drive, get those upgraded, and where they are four lanes, a dual cable, he does it, he'll track the slow motors, rock layers, Highway 65, Highway 43, Rock Springs, those projects, we have to see construction on that this summer, it has been awarded to the Craft Construction, one of our own counties, so you're looking forward to seeing that, get down with. A big project that is scheduled for Highway 65, goes from Douglasville Park Road to Highway 7, they have programmed an $11 million investment into that section of highway, and I did want to, I phoned out my email already, this is the project that we need to commit a $2.5 million to, to order to make an investment to address the needs that we got on 652, what he tells, and then the final major project they have is Highway 65, being with Main Street, replacing the Main Street Bridge over Turkey Creek, so that's a, that's a five-foot nine mile project, so out of $47.5 million, I have funded the money for projects in Boone County, $24.6 million of that is actually in Boone County, so, that's a pretty good, that's probably the most major of projects I've seen come out of the DOT that's been in Boone County, so about this year. And then they also have a pretty extensive labor preparation program over the next four years in the county, while that is in the county, the Highway 43, and 65, the seven in Boone County could have done, as well as capital, we don't want capital from five block stock going on out of town, we've been doing it under the money the last few years, so what they got in there, some investment in Boone County right now, is pulling a $47.1 million out, that gives the DOT some $1 million into our area, but also we want to pull out there is one project that is going to skip, that is $20 million allocated to the Highway 41 corridor, but that is spread out in three towns, Baymore, and Washington, and we do not know, and basically they have a plan where that money is going to split, they're going to pick those projects, so there's a good chance of a part of the door that's $47.1 million to the DOT over the next four years, so we're excited to see that as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, responding to comments, people.
I think Wade, Bob Largin, has a statement.
I just want to say, Wade and I got this report from ARDOT at the same time, from an economic development standpoint, that $47 million in Boone County and the 20-plus million inside the city limits of Harrison are absolutely a win for the city in this county. The, the folks who utilize those roads, our businesses, our industry, our manufacturers are tremendously excited about what this means. We've been working with ARDOT and our, our Highway Commissioner, Philip Toldo, in Springdale now, for about two-plus years, and it's paid off. We're excited, and we think there's more to come, so we're, we're extremely pleased with the report that Wade provided to you.
Thank you, Bob. Any other questions for Wade?
I did want to point out, I've had multiple citizens mention to me what a good job they did with snow removal.
Absolutely, yeah, good job, yeah. Hey, baby! Yeah, I know, for some reason, it really looked like the streets in a matter of no time, kind of went from, yeah, and there was still snow out on the lawns and the streets were clear, so, no, I thought they did a real good job, real good.
People say it's the best job that the city has ever had on the streets.
I'd have to agree with that, thank you. All right, Wade, anything else?
At the moment, it's time, I'll have some, for that comes major projects next month, hopefully I can get involved in playing.
Are you going to be leaving us now, or are you going to be with us later?
I'm, I'm thinking I'll leave in here in just a few minutes.
Okay, okay, good deal, we'll see you tomorrow, thank you. Okay, let's go on to Mark, are you with us, Mark? Yeah, you are.
Yes, sir, I'm here. Everybody should have my monthly report in the Google Docs, it was a busy month, of course, with the weather, we did have, we kind of did the council last week of all the fire system that we had freezing bust, it was a very unusual year for that kind of stuff, so we have several buildings, we have cracked some as well, that everybody's having to deal with this, get it fixed, we've been working with the various businesses, and the actual middle school is one, that we've worked with to get them back up and going, so forward under that. We had a, again, another busy month of medical calls, we're on about 87% medical, which is kind of on track for that. The, on the permitting side, we did, did right, we're talking about 19 permits, for a total of almost $5,000 of other permits being brought in, with about $637,000 of the construction value put at that, so that's, that's good to see in January, I think that is interesting, so we're happy to have that going on in town. One of the things I would like to bring up, and kind of laugh all over whenever Chief Grady's in there with Jerry, is Keith Nichols is retiring after 28 years, Clint refused for us to give him any kind of a retirement party or anything like that, we gave him a little plaque in the free agency, say, I'd really like for council members to ready out and, again, over 28 years of serving in the city, he's had countless hours of through the years of fire prevention, and for the last decade, he's done the COVID portion, and was probably one of the longest off the devil's plant for the year, so we really appreciate him doing what he's done, and certainly would like to bring him in front of the council and give him a good going-out party, but Clint did not want that, and we respect his wishes, so, March is his last day, so we're definitely going to miss him.
Will you be taking him home?
I'm sorry?
Will you be taking him home like Officer Morgan did?
I'm not a better reporter than there is, I kind of like what's going on, I'd have to drag him in on a leash if he needs to come in, I'll be done with him.
Oh, that's great.
So, but yeah, I seriously doubt we'll only explain a bunch, but it's not only a coworker to be good for. My years are right here, so, so we're going to miss him. Does anybody have any questions or comments from my report?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Okay, Luke, are you with us?
I am. I'm actually going to wait, no report really at this time. We'll discuss a little bit in finance committee.
Okay. That's it? All right. That was the shortest report Luke's ever given. David Wilson is on vacation, I believe. He's not with us. We've got Chuck with Parks. Chuck?
Man, I thought I was going to have the shortest report tonight, but Luke beat me, but.
You look good.
I just want to say, we got awarded the 4A State Soccer Tournament this year. We're going to be hosting that. We're also going to be hosting the 3A, 4A Baseball Softball Regional, which is a big asset to the community, especially tourism. And our basketball league will be finishing up in a couple of weeks. We're still working on the bathroom down at Wonderwilla Project at the park. And my guys are doing an excellent job of working on the junior high during, when the weather's bad, to try to help start cleaning some of that up where we can start using that gym and some of those classrooms as soon as we can to get more kids involved in our programs. But that's about what we've got going on. I got great news today. Soccer sign-ups were way up. They start practicing on the 15th, and their league starts on March 29th, so that's. Everything's kind of getting back to normal with activities and sports in the, in the community, so that's very exciting news. So, that's basically what I've got going on right now. And I want to brag on the community, because I've been doing my, my ads and my sponsorships in January and February. And again, the community is very supportive of all of our programs at Parks. I just wanted to give everyone a thank you from, to end the city council to know that we do have a great community to support our, our programs. So, thank you.
Any questions for Chuck? Chuck, I've got something I want to share with you and everyone else. Yesterday afternoon, I went down to the park, Wonderwilla Park, and the other park. And I am not exaggerating, there was at least 200 kids when I got there, over the two different parks. You know, and at first, I wanted to post this, of course, because what, what a great deal. But then I got to thinking, I sure don't want to take pictures of people's children. But really, there were, that thing you could not move. Kids were just packed like I've never seen them before. I know the weather was nice, but, you know, it says a lot for the park conditions.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. Okay, Shonda's with us tonight. Hi, Shonda.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to give a quick, brief update that we are still, you know, doing what we need to do to provide rental assistance to the community. We've been granted recently an additional 40 vouchers for a mainstream program, which is a specialized voucher for the non-elderly disabled person. So, that's great for our community. We have a huge population of those that are disabled and that are not elderly. And then, we also are still providing assistance for what we call rapid rehousing and homeless prevention. And that's for those that are homeless or those that are at risk of being homeless. And if you are behind on your rent, there are a couple different programs. We may be able to help you with one of these programs, or we can direct you to help with it. So, give our office a call at 741-8673, and see if we can provide assistance.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Shonda? Can you imagine what kind of year she had last year? Man.
It's tough. It's tough. The good news is for rapid rehousing and homeless prevention, last year, or not last year, but a few months ago, we were awarded $200,000 totals. And last week, we found out we've received another $175,000 for the program. So, we'll have $375,000 put back in the community for the next few years, just for that.
Good, good job. Okay, all right. At this time, we'll go ahead and move down to committee assignments, and I think we're going to move down pretty quick. Joel, we moved your, what we had in the committee, we moved that down to resources and policies with Wayne. So, do you have anything else tonight, Joel?
Nope.
Okay, good deal. Thank you. Mitch?
In finance, we have nothing, given that we're still waiting for the end of the year billings to come through. Luke disturbed me because he wanted me to do this, but I'm going to let him do the, the good news here in a minute. But I did want to make the council aware that we are processing water bills online with the new vendor and software that we have now. And Luke, I'm going to let you go ahead and give the good news.
Well, thanks. We did receive our sales tax numbers here recently for what was sold in December, collected in January, and then we received here just a few days ago, but it is the highest we've ever had. And, and we were at $126,000 in the general fund for the month, obviously. We were the highest, county was the highest, so great news going forward. Hopefully, we can keep that up.
All right.
End of that. That's, that's good news.
That's great. Thank you. You know, I don't know if I've ever had the opportunity. You know how Mitch says nice things about everybody? He's got to be the nicest guy I know. I think Mitch, Mitch is without a doubt, folks. I mean, you couldn't ask for a better person in that seat over there on the council. Could you imagine if we didn't have Mitch?
Can we move on, please?
You got a second? Yeah. No, thank you, Mitch, for, for all you do. So, we're going to move on to Larry, Larry Phillips. Okay, thank you, Larry. And Mary Jean, I know we took care of Jerry. Good, thank you. You're kind of going down there, Public Works. Bill?
Nothing.
You are kidding?
I can if you want.
That's the first.
I can if you want.
Yeah, now, maybe you'll have something coming up, but you'll, good. Thanks for waiting on that. Wayne, and I think you're going to take the people that are waiting and move them up, but it's all yours. You've got a bunch.
Right, actually, what I'm going to do is just reverse the way it's listed on the agenda here. Because Joel was to give the hand-me to his committee's work on him.
Yes.
I'm thinking about just giving, I can give him my committee work back there.
Oh, I see, yeah.
All righty. The first one we're going to take up is the resolution, residential development incentive. And if you're aware of, I think this is not everybody's here at 5:30 when we had the committee meeting on it. We have a resolution that we passed, revolus, the establishment incentive for residents of the government within the city of Harrison, water limits, and planning areas. And those that were here have heard it and went with it earlier. And at this time, I believe we've got some people on camera that may want to say something. And if you have any questions for them, this would be the time to do that.
All right. Is that Steve or Dan?
I'm here to answer questions.
Okay, okay. Wayne, I'd like to, to make a comment before you ask for a motion. I'd like to request you make a change down to Section 5, under building permit fees. If we would scratch, I think it's about six words, starts with "platted", platted after the passage of the resolution, and if you scratch those, now you will be allowing other local builders to receive the same benefits on the building fees as developers would. The way this was written, it was only going to be for new developments. And we don't have a lot of lots in town, but whatever ones we do, we want to make sure the local builders receive the same benefit. So, if you would consider that going forward, during the break, Grant and I spoke of that, and that's what we decided. If you scratch that, it'll give them the same benefits.
We have a motion to pass this resolution as presented with the wood chair. So, listen.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Well, can we get some input from Wade on that change?
Wade is probably gone. Grant would be.
Grant, do you think that, I mean, would that take care of what we're, we're trying to exercise through this?
Right, yeah, that last paragraph said it only applied for subdivisions, platted after the passage of the resolution. So, that would eliminated any current subdivisions or lots that are already in town. So, if we struck the, platted after the passage of this resolution, it would include buildable lots within the city limits, so.
And my concern, because I'm not a member of the committee, but my concern was individuals that might, and I asked a question during committee, thank the chair for giving me that opportunity. How does that affect someone that may have four or five watts in town, if they're about to build spec homes on?
Now they're covered.
Right.
Yeah. With this change, they'd be covered. Yeah, thank you for, for that, Mitch.
Mayor, I wanted to question if I may.
Yes.
For clarification of mine, is that going to be basically any new residential construction, correct?
Yeah.
In a new, in a new development?
No, no, see, we're taking that, by taking that out, it eliminates the new development.
Okay.
And what, what you bring up is a very good point. That would apply to any residential construction. And I know that would not be the intent, because we'd like it to be for spec homes. So, however, let me say this, there's only, what, 15 lots in town that you could build a new home on. So, if you did do that, and some people built custom homes, you know, it's not a big loss, because it's only a handful of lots that we would be talking about. But I do understand what you're saying, Mark, and that's, that's a good point.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that for, down the road, if we understood that basically, or for my department anyway, when we done a new, new residential, one of two family dwellings, because again, if it goes beyond one of two family dwellings, it kicks into commercial type, so anyway, so none of that apply.
Grant, could you?
We, we knew what we'd get into going forward, if we did tell someone something wrong, we got to, well, that's what we're doing now. It's sort of the dollar amount, it doesn't, the 50% is not, I know Luke and Wade themselves have spoke about this at length, and I agree with it 100%. I don't, I don't disagree. I just want to make sure that I'm only, kind of know what we're talking about.
Yeah. Grant, would it be possible to add wordage, that it would just be resale homes?
Sure, I mean, any, any wordage could be added, whatever council agreed to, and then it would just be a motion to pass this resolution as agreed to and amended by council.
Okay, if we could do that, Wayne, then that would get us to really the intent. That would cover the intent and just allow spec home building. If you can figure out how to put that into a motion.
Well, I have to, I have to withdraw the motions then, because we're running, if we make changes, it has to be with.
I was just going to say, and there could be further discussions, so I think a full discussion and then a motion would be.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely, so.
What about Section 3 and 4? We, we had discussed in the committee meeting, and Wade, according to his email and his comments, I believe was pretty well on board with it. Potentially changing it from reduce in both of those sections, reducing by 50 cents to 50% to just waiving those. Boy, we do too much damage, and that probably should be clarified, that's what we want to do.
I mean, yeah, I mean, any of these, all the changes so far that have been proposed are legal changes that the council has the power to do. So, you know, my only opinion is a legal opinion, really, which is, anything I've heard so far is within the legal allowance by law. So, whatever the council decides, whether it wants to keep them at 50% or waive them entirely, that's, that's within the council's discretion. And I would just, I would just make sure, and I can help with making sure the motion reflects what the council wishes to happen.
Is there any particular reason, and I don't, I don't disagree with you, Jeremy, but I'm wondering why it's set at 50%? Was there a particular reason for that? So, there would be some amount of fee coming in? Was that the reason? Was it not to negate all of it, or what was the primary basis of that?
I think, and I'm not on the committee either, but we're in council. I think what the original plan was, was to reduce fees in half as a whole. I mean, I think that's the way it was presented, so that's the number that was fit.
Okay.
Since that time, we've got to the point where we're eliminating fees altogether. I would, first thing I need to do is, I want to go ahead and withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I think it's the proper step we have. Mark, are you still there?
Yes, sir.
What is this going to do to your department in regards to funding coming in?
As far as on the 50%, I know we talked about, myself and Luke and Wade talked, we did not disagree. We did, we did take 50% on certain things. Now, if we're starting talking about every project, we don't do a lot of new residential. Last month, for example, give me a second, I'll pull it up, we just done a couple of new residences, and the permit fee for those was $957 for those. So, you know, 50% of that, we certainly not going to completely break it. Unfortunately, the fact of it is, we've always had a really low permitting fees for this new construction, for the residential. So, I guess that's good, where we're cutting it in half. But I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, we're on the same page, that everything new residential is going to be done that way.
100%.
I don't think it's going to be a big case in my department, no.
So, let me ask you another question then. Are you seeing most of your funding coming from residential or coming from commercial?
No, it's mainly commercial, because they're such a bigger amount, and they're done based on square footage, based on what they build. So, they, they're very considerable. Residential little structures are flat, so much for square foot. It's pretty, pretty simple, pretty low, so it's not really a big deal anymore.
You know, it's kind of a weird time that we have had a lot more commercial construction than residential. I don't think that's ever happened before.
And like you said, too, the amount, the amount of available lots inside the city.
Right, is a reason, yeah.
I was a bit concerned going back here, we're just, we're literally rehashing this ordinance all over again in council. I'm, I'm of the opinion, and I'm going to speak my thing, I'm of the opinion, is there a rush on this?
There was. I think the developer, and he may want to speak to this, he indicated a month ago that he wanted to get something done fairly soon. That's why we, we came to committee tonight. And I don't know, Dan, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, Mayor, I guess two points, a standard. Is, yes, urgency is important, obviously. I guess, and it was made in the committee, there's, you know, for the last 10 years, the community has experienced almost no new residential development, and which comes with subdues. And somebody's got to take that risk. And if you're not getting any revenue, if, you know, a couple of projects are announced, and you get half as much, that's 1,000% more than you would have got if nothing gets built. And the, the residual effect of people moving in and additional sales and real estate taxes, I think there was a projection at one of the previous meetings in four or five years, that it paid for the loss of the 50%. So, the urgency is, I think it's a good thing for you. 50% of something is a lot better than 100% of nothing. And you're not, it's, it's not such a big aggregate dollar amount that it's going to hurt you, and if it works, I think it's a good thing. I, I think more than happens, and the more 50% you give away, I think the community is, is going to realize it, and you're, you're not going to get hurt, so.
Frankly, I'm not so much concerned about, I'm more concerned about the English of the, of the resolution. To make sure that, because we've made several changes here in the last 10 minutes. Are we going to be comfortable with doing this, without seeing these changes in black or white?
I mean, if you want, I was going to say I could work on it while council's going on, but I may have other things that I'm needed for as well. But I think it depends on what, what the changes are. If we're just talking about that last section, making it apply to any spec home, you know, built in the city limits, I mean, I feel very comfortable, everyone being on the same page there. If we're talking about. everyone being on the same page there, if we're talking about other, if we don't...
One thing, Bill, that discussion was just about section three and four, not the building permits and five, leaving that at fifty percent.
And like I said, I'm, you know, I was here for the committee meeting, so I understand that, I mean, we're just going through something here that's come out of committee, and we're making changes as we're going by the seat of our pants, and my point is, is, are we all comfortable with that, or do we need to...
I'm comfortable if we're just changing the percentages and striking that last paragraph, but that's the only change.
Are there any other changes we need to make? Jeremy, I mean, you guys are the experts in this.
From all I'm seeing, and you're the chairman, Joe, but I think we would just be removing the word reduce, the fourth word in section three and four, and replacing it with waiving, and then, you know, by fifty percent, would be struck out in both of those, so, that's what I see.
That can, that can be done, again, that's...
So you're talking about changes in section three and section four, which says the fifty percent, and that that will be basically zero, right?
Yes, so the city will waive all planning and zoning fees associated with qualifying, and you go on, and then you would cut out by fifty percent.
I expect that we need to decide in the room, is that the way we want it, if you want it, if we want it.
Can I just clarify something, what Mark said, is he, this department can handle the fifty percent, or is he saying he can, this department can handle the one hundred percent reduction of that, of that fund?
Yeah, Mark's, Mark's only applies to the last paragraph, section five, the fifty percent, the others would go back to public works.
With Wade.
With Wade, yeah. I've got, Jeremy, I've got a concern on section four. And, you know, again, I'm talking about the locals, that wouldn't, that wouldn't apply to the locals. Now, the fifty percent, I talked to Wade about this prior to this meeting, and he indicated one reason why he didn't want to offer the fifty percent to the locals, or, I say locals, I'm talking about lots that are in town, that are just sitting there around town. He's not sure, doing a water and sewer connection fee reduction, he knows what he's going to get on a new development, it's going to be clean and obtainable, when he goes into some of these older lots, he don't know what he's going to get down there to do a connection, so, so that made sense on the fifty percent, but if you give that up a hundred percent to these folks, and not, and, you know, then again, nothing to the locals, I don't know, you know, I don't know, I want to, you know, we're giving them everything on the, on the plat, the planning and the zoning, and, you know, half of the other stuff, I just don't know if we'll get, if that would be fair to the locals to give a hundred percent on that. The fifty percent, I understood, according to what Wade said, but a hundred, I don't know, and if Wade was here to answer that, that would be a good thing.
He did send out an email.
Another question that I have in regards to this, when we're talking to locals, we're talking, and you brought this up, but I want to make sure we're correct.
Right.
You're talking a house here and a house there?
Yeah.
That's not what this resolution says, this resolution says that it will be ten buildable lots.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
It doesn't say...
No, you're talking, you're seeing...
This, I mean...
You're seeing that in the, what, paragraph four?
Section three.
Section three, that's fine, that's fine, I was only applying the locals to section five. Section three, they wouldn't apply because...
Section four also.
And section four does also, but that's what I'm saying about, I'm not trying to give anything to the locals bill in section four, I'm just saying by giving a developer a hundred percent, I just feel like the locals might resent that.
Undoubtedly, they will.
Yeah, undoubtedly, they will, they might resent fifty, they might resent the fifty, but we can, we also have, you know, what Wade said, it's kind of unknown what I get when I get under there, so that is justification to give something, I don't know if it's justification to give a hundred percent. That was my only concern with that one, and then when you do the three, that's, you know, that's fine, so, that was, I know, I know it's getting a little more confusing as we go, and I know Mr. Ruda wants to, I feel like he wants to get started, and I hope that's the case.
I reread.
Can I make a comment? Can I make a comment? This is Steve Gray.
Please, Steve.
The reason we were asking for the no fee on the water and sewer is, because we are putting all of the water and sewer in, unlike others, the water and sewer's been put in roads by others, and there's not any part of it that we're not doing, like Wade did mention, the only thing the city is supplying and putting in is the water needed. We end up supplying the pit, the yoke, all of the pipes to and from the house, in the streets, everywhere.
Okay.
So that was a little bit of the difference, why we were asking for the city to give a little more there, if we're doing ninety-nine to ninety percent of the work.
And I reread, and I agree with it, I was going to make the point, that on an existing lot, the city's already running something that's supplying there, and it's in the street or in the lot, so that makes somewhat sense, and I reread Wade's email, and the only thing I would be concerned about is the building permit fees, so leaving them at fifty percent, but reducing the water tap fees to a hundred percent, labor, heat, matter of fact, in our pre-council meeting, Wade, Wade really had no issue because of what was just said by the developers.
Okay.
Because they are doing, they're doing it all, from, they're building the roads, they're bringing the lines, and the whole nine yards, I mean, they're, they're doing all of it, it's not like somebody in town's building a single house, and then we have to go out, drop the tap, do all the hookups, get them ready to go, they're doing, they're doing lock, stock, and barrel all, really got to happen, is we put the meter on the way to go, and I think he was okay with that. That's what I read, as well.
And that's, and that's what I got from him in our meeting earlier today.
Um, I think Steve, Steve brings up a good point, and if that's the case, then I would be fine with that, so, and it doesn't, what I'm talking about doesn't apply to three, so Jerry's comment on going to a hundred percent on three and four, that would be an easy change for Grant to make. So we're only talking change on three and four to a hundred, and then the change we discussed on section five.
Can you formulate a motion back on that, Mr. Barlow?
Oh, good luck with that.
Yeah, I bet you can.
Quite honestly, I'm not even going to make it, no, I'm not comfortable with it, and I understand that we're up against, we're up against a tight act here to make this happen. I will make a motion to approve the resolution with the changes that we have made in sections three, four, and five. I've got it, Grant?
And to clarify that, then, just making sure we're all on the same page.
The changes in section three are one hundred percent, is that correct?
Correct.
Section four is one hundred percent, correct?
Correct.
And section five stays at fifty percent, or?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
And that's it.
Now, there's section five, you eliminate the words, the...
Oh, yes, and the word.
It would apply to any lot within the city limits of Harrison, and are we, and that's a...
Section five's not tied to...
That's a spec home?
That's a spec home, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that's it.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, good, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, roll call.
Yeah.
So Bill Oswalt?
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Bill Oswalt, yes.
Robert Duley.
Robert Duley, yes.
Joel Williams.
Joel Williams, yes.
Wyngell.
Wyngell Town, yes.
Jeremy Ragland.
Jeremy Ragland, yes.
Mary Jean Greger.
Mary Jean Greger, yes.
Mitch Magnus.
Mitch Magnus, yes.
Larry Phillips.
Larry Phillips, yes.
Record will show a yes, zero no, motion carries.
All right, Steve and Dan, thank you all very much, and get after it, we appreciate you guys.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, caveat, just a caveat on that, that as soon as possible, I would like to see the finalized resolution sent out to us by the panel.
Sure.
Grant, tomorrow will be fine, can you get court tomorrow?
Uh, no court tomorrow.
Okay, can we get it tomorrow, finish?
Yeah, I'm looking at it now.
He's typing it right now?
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I just want to save the thing for...
Great. All right, Wayne, back to you, sir.
Uh, the next one up on our list is resolution in reference to Camp Jack, build our rebuild here at time, on time four eleven, this is a resolution for the mayor to decide if he's agreeing with it, and at this time, I would intend a motion to cut this resolution up a bit, and I'll make that motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Joel.
Second.
And a second, is that Larry?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, after this resolution, is Matt with us?
Yeah, Matt is here, I believe, Matt? Matt Russell?
Good evening.
Matt.
Hi.
Let me ask you a couple of questions on this, just for my own peace of mind, one, I'm thrilled that your group, being a veteran myself, that is going to do this and make this happen, are you comfortable with the cost that you're going to incur on this building?
Well, comfortable be the wrong word, it's, it's going to be substantial, but I believe it's something we can raise the money and take care of.
It's a lot, I mean, it's a lot of money, I mean, because once you guys have this, the city basically wipes their hands clean, with the exception that we, I mean, we own the facility, but it's there, so the roof repairs, the air conditioning, heating repair, that's all going to be on you guys, is that correct?
Not necessarily.
Well, I'm still looking to get some, uh, help from the city, that hasn't been determined yet on the roof, whether it just gets repaired or completely redone, but as far as the HVAC and everything else, we actually understand that would be our responsibility.
Now, Bill, back on the roof, I think it was a couple of months ago, we had a estimate on that, and that's all it was, Wade was trying to get a better number, they had to go out and test the roof right now, and they've done that, and I know next month Wade will have a better number and a recommendation on the roof.
So, I mean, are we going to be responsible for the repair of the roof?
You know, that's got to be determined, I think, a couple of months ago, it was looked at, Wade presented a fix is seven thousand, and a repair is seventy thousand. At that time, they, I think the attitude was, you know, no sense to fix it, we need to fix the whole roof, and then we said, okay, Wade, get us a little better figure on that, and that's what he was doing, but, we're not obligated, but I think it was our intention a few months ago to take care of the roof. Does anybody else have anything to, is that kind of how you saw it?
Since the city owns the building.
Correct.
The roof does have to be fixed, the city would have to fix it, whether or not...
Right.
It's going to be checked.
Right. Yeah, and it was leaking to the point where it needed, it needed our attention.
And a lot of me here, okay, and I'm not particularly comfortable with that, but what's the difference, if the city's going to be responsible for repairing the roof, we don't repair the heating and air conditioning?
Well, I think that was something we looked at, the roof needed some immediate attention, maybe the heat and air does, but it's not doing further damage, where right now, there was water coming in, so...
Is that, is that in this lease?
Is it in the lease? Uh, no, no, I think the lease...
Is it legally in this lease?
That we are taking care of the roof?
Absolutely.
I don't know, you want to speak to that again, sir?
Sure, I mean, I think the idea is that since the city owns it anyway, the city is going to be responsible to some extent for repairs to the building, and the possible new tenants, if the council votes on this lease, would help defray the costs to the city, and the lease at least anticipates that those costs are going to be pretty significant in forms of deframing of cost and/or improvements to the building, so I think it's a more flexible approach as to who's going to pay for it after the fact, is how I see it, but you're, it's not, it is not spelled out in black and white in the lease, if something went wrong on X, Y, Z, except for it does say the lessie is responsible for maintenance, but I think they can come to the city, and I expect that would be up to the council to decide how to help, if at all, for that lease.
Might be a mighty catchword.
It is.
High terms, maintenance, the heating and air conditioning also.
It's the...
Heating and air conditioning, most of it works, some of it doesn't, part of the issue is that it's an older system, and it's not as efficient as it should be, so if we can raise the funds, we would like to put a more energy-efficient system in there. Another issue is that we're trying to restore the historical aspect of the building back to when it was constructed in nineteen forty-two, and right now, we've got those two big HVAC units sitting out in front, we'd rather just take away, delete all of the building.
Right.
So we're looking at either relocating those, or possibly putting in more efficient ones, this is not something that we're looking at doing in the next month, it would be done over a period of time, and there are, hopefully, we're researching it now, but there's grants available, and there's also, you know, we'll be out, beat the bushes trying to raise some dollars to get the building the way that we want, but it's going to take some time, some days, some hard work to do it, but it's something we're willing to take on.
Okay.
But it would help considerably if the city could take care of the roof issue, either by temporary compare, either by temporary repair, or take over the, uh, we do all of this.
Matt, let me ask you a question, do with that in line, would you feel more comfortable with that being part of the lease?
Um, it would, but it's, since the city hasn't voted on that as yet, I don't know how it could be, unless they were willing to vote on that now, but I don't think they can without Wade getting back with some more input.
Yeah, we don't have a number for you yet, Bill.
You know, this is sort of a unique lease, in that normally, the landlord's responsible for, you know, keeping the building in, in repair, and in this case, it's more, it's on the leasing, and we understand that, and that's deferred, you know, with part of the value of the lease, is that, you know, we're going to be putting some dollars in, fixing the place up, so it is usable currently, but we would hope to make some major improvements, modifications to it, and when I say it's usable currently, that means putting a bucket over the one bad leak that's there right now, of the rains or snows, but that's really not a big issue at the moment.
A little bit, a little bit.
Okay, a bigger bucket, yeah, I know. So we had a motion and a second, is that correct? We're in the discussion phase, any other discussion?
I have to say, I mean, I understand all the discussion, as a city council member, it's my impression that we're going to fix the roof regardless of whether it's minor repair or major repairs, because we're leasing it to Camp Jack, might not do that to someone else, but I'm not going to, in my personal opinion, I want to make them hauls, basically, move into the building with a good roof, a good building.
Good.
And maintenance of the air conditioning can't be as much as what repair of the roof will be soon.
Maintenance, you're probably correct.
I mean, replacement, rather than just simple monthly or yearly maintenance of it, they're going to remove those units anyway, that would be their distraction, they would be asking us for permission... be asking us for permission to remove what's there, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if, if I'm a homeowner, renting to somebody, and they say, hey, I wanna change out the central heat and air unit, and you good with that? The current works, and we just like replacing, and say, yes. But I, I'm not comfortable giving veterans a building that leaves.
Yeah, and I think the intent was, we were looking at that, we just didn't have the number, and we had a sixty to eighty number, I think, but Wade even thought that number could be less after Harnish did certain types of inspection, and he just doesn't have that number back yet.
They hadn't gone back with the direction.
No, they had not, but I think it was our intent that we were gonna take care of that. That was a couple of months ago.
That was the decision, that was the city would be responsible for the roof. Our decision from this point forward, in my understanding, was we didn't know how much it would cost us, we didn't know what track we were paying to do that, and that's the decision that we got to make.
That's correct. That's correct, because we had the option of just repairing the leak, but I think we were leaning toward the, Wade was recommending the other, and I almost believe he did recommend the other. But that's something we have to discuss going forward, and, uh, and we're not respons, we're not, uh, liable to do any of that. Uh, it's not a requirement on our part, but that's where the discussion ended. It appeared that we were...
We're not liable for what?
For the roof. You know, when we signed the lease...
Wait a minute, timeout. That is not what we're discussing. We are saying we are liable for the roof.
If you wanna say that tonight, you can say that. The lease does not say that.
Right, but our discussion is, what are we liable for?
Um, whatever it says in the lease is what we're liable for, and...
It doesn't say anything about the roof.
I agree. I agree, it does not.
That's my point.
That's, it does not.
Yes, and I don't wanna hang these people out in a bad position, that they end up having to eat it because the roof collapsed on them, because we don't be responsible and spend the eighty grand that's here required for a new roof, because that is what Wade's recommendation is.
Right, right.
Not patch it, but fix it.
So, so what do you recommend?
I think it needs to be in the lease, point blank, that we're responsible for the roof.
Okay, to what degree? The whole new roof?
Correct.
Okay, if Bill would make that, if Bill would make that, uh, motion, I'm sure you can do the same on this lease and add it, correct, Grant?
Yeah, I mean, the, the lease in paragraph five states that the lesssee will be responsible for all maintenance, including the roof, so if, if the, if the, if the discussion, um, what comes out of discussion is that the city wants to amend the lease to make the city responsible for the roof, as long as I have clear direction from council, it can be, the lease can be amended, um, and we can make an appropriate motion.
It sounds like that's what Bill wants to do. I think if you wanna amend your motion, Bill?
Uh, pardon me, but maintenance of the roof is different than a major repair or replacement.
Right. Bill will, I'm sure Bill will make it clear onto what we're gonna do with the roof.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only thing, and I think we could even do it in a motion, and I'd wanna consult Luke on this. Um, we could make a motion to sign it, but then we can turn around and make a motion if we commit so many dollars to roof repair by or, you know, by, by both.
I think you can do either or.
Luke, what do you think of that?
I think that's fine. A little bit of background, I think when Wade discussed with everybody, or I say everybody, with the roofing company, they talked about having about a seven thousand dollar repair, um, although that would also probably only last a couple of years before you would need to replace it anyways. Um, so I think the whole intent, especially behind an actual building, uh, from an accounting standpoint, you have a, a building, your piece of property, you're responsible for everything inside of it, may not be necessarily, uh, it'd be depreciated, obviously, separately, and so that can be felt in a separate liability, I guess. Excuse me. So, but yes, that, that's definitely doable, to go ahead and set aside up to a certain dollar amount and just require a budget amendment. I'm assuming it comes out of the general fund, um, as of this point.
And I think, in the, to bring it back to what you just said, Wade, discussion was, why spend seven thousand for two more years when you can spend forty? I think that was gonna be threw out, I was not exactly comfortable speaking on his behalf, but he said, I don't understand seven now and forty two years from now.
Exactly right.
Spend the forty now, we're done with it.
He mentioned that other, you know, the awards.
There were two sections of the roof he was talking about, one was forty, um, that was the oldest section of the roof, and then the other one was thirty, but he thought, or thirty or thirty-five, but he thought that, um, Harnish Roofing went back up there and was taking a closer look at it to see if it, it was, that was the worst-case scenario, was about eighty thousand dollars. The thought was maybe, lucky, it might be sixty. So, uh, there's no hard number there, but that was the range it's, it was on.
That's repair versus replacement, correct?
Correct.
Pardon?
Replacement.
That's replacement.
Correct.
That's replacement?
It is, replacement.
Okay. Well, it's actually not, but it is, it's, it's a new type of cody over the entire roof. It's a rubberized thick cody that's got a twenty-year, uh, warranty to it.
Mr. Mayor, would you be comfortable with tying the lease out of business and making a budget amendment, uh, to commit so much money? The exact is the same, but...
Let me ask Matt. Matt, are you comfortable with this?
Yeah, uh, I'm comfortable with it, uh, absolutely, if they, uh, especially if they can, if you put in there, the city will take responsibility for the roof, either, you know, if it's fresh, you need to repair or, uh, to repair the entire roof.
I'm, I mean, I'm okay with that. I mean, that's, that's not what this says, but I think that's what our intent is, is the city is going to be responsible for the roof, whether it's repair or replace.
Right, if we commit funds as a vote, we're committing funds.
Then we're not gonna do that.
Well, unless, unless we, you know, we, we would have, all, all we have to do is, uh, have a motion for a budget amendment, uh, to commit out of the general fund, and I don't know what line item we're talking about, Luke, uh, building improvements or whatever, but to commit, uh, a certain amount of money to that, correct?
It's correct, yeah. We have a line item where we purchased the junior high to come out of the same line.
So, we, we would be, you know, we'd be committing a certain, in fact, it's a little bit more the same that we're responsible for the roof repair, we're, we're committing funds to that.
So, would it be wise to have that final estimate in our hands, so we knew the amount to commit to that? I'm asking.
Yeah, that's what we were attempting to do, but...
First year that member threw out eight thousand.
It was. It was. He just texted me back, I was texting him, that eighty is the worst-case scenario.
When the building belongs to the city, it's ours, we're gonna have to put a new roof on it, or fix the roof.
Right, even if we let it sit there empty, we have to, we have to deal.
Whether we lease it or not.
Correct.
Unless you want to tear it down.
Correct. We don't want to do that.
No. But I thought my thinking, at that point, we're in my committee, you know, we first thought, uh, policy, if we do the budget amendment, we have to come out of my committee going with the committee to do that.
Right.
Do we have to commit the money tonight?
I don't think so.
Come back and discuss it, we can, we can accept the lease and come back and committee? We will know which money is going to be committed at that time?
Again, I, I think the consensus of council is, I, I, I don't know, I'm sensing that, that we're gonna replace the roof or repair it.
Mm-hmm.
And again, I'm comfortable with that, and Wade could get the number.
I'm comfortable with that, I just wanna make sure that, in fact, is what we're gonna do, and we're not gonna hang these people out.
Uh, I don't think we need to have to take that vote tonight. I think we can have our attorney rework that one sentence in there, just a little bit, the issue that the city will be responsible for the roof.
Simple.
Well, then, then we're gonna have to commit the funds in committee.
Correct.
Or anything else.
Right, then we can do it as part of a line item, write the budget.
Yeah, and then we can discuss which way we're gonna do it, how it's gonna help us at the moment.
Luke, do you have a preference?
No, it, it doesn't matter to me, one, one bit, I think either way works.
Is it maintenance or repair, or just repair or replace? We'd wanna make sure, that's only my only clarification, we want to make sure what we're talking about.
It's gonna be repair regardless of how it's built, if it has to be replaced or it has to be replaced.
So, does it work as repair or replace? Okay, so responsible co-charge for the roof.
Right.
If we put that in the lease, the, for the duration of this lease, we're certainly we're responsible for every roof maintenance, correct?
Well, the city building, we are.
Well, which means...
Only if we put it in the lease.
We are the leasee, correct?
Mm-hmm.
We're the leaseor.
No, we're the leaseor.
And this says, that this says, Jeremy's right on the money, that during the initial term, leasee shall have a duty to perform all maintenance on the property, including but not limited to the structural components of the building, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, and the roof. It does not say leaseor.
That's why we're having this discussion.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is we remove the roof and put it, and put another sentence in here that says, HVAC system, the leaseor will be responsible for the maintenance and repair of the roof.
That would do it. But if, again, I'm pointing this out, repair, ma, maintenance and replacement or repair are two different things, so if every time there's something wrong with the roof, you let, is the city gonna have to...
That's, that's the way I interpret it, the answer is yes.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
We're responsible for the roof.
And it's part of your warranty supposedly comes with a pair, so at least that kind of...
Okay, then I'm gonna, I'm not gonna apply this, I'm gonna try and get clarity here. We're about to do two of the leases, and we're responsible for the roof and those pla, those replacements? It's Seven Ten Robinson and Independent Living?
Right, it's the same.
They're different?
We'll let you know here, just a few minutes.
Do you want to depend on the answer?
I don't, what I'm saying is, if, if it's a city structure...
That's really not how we got here.
I understand that.
Our discussion is, the fact is, basically, a gentleman's agreement that we would take care of the roof.
I understand that.
That is not a leasee, leaseor, it's a gentleman's agreement.
But if we treat one property one way, and the other is just simply based on the lease, or we just let them stay, would we, would we have to fix the roof at Seven Ten Robinson, based on the lease?
The North Robinson contemplates that the tenant will maintain the roof.
There you are.
Okay.
Got it? An inconsistency, that, that is the same.
I believe it would be in our best interest, we can do one of two things. We can do the gentleman's agreement going forward.
Dangerous.
Or we can indicate in the lease that we will replace or repair the current roof, and the tenant would be liable thereafter, and that's probably the best wordage. Uh, to make us take care of what's there now, we don't have to do a budget amendment for that tonight, but then the tenant's responsible, and that's the way it should be with...
That's probably how it was with Independent Living. I assume we didn't turn over a building, I wasn't around them, but I assume we didn't turn over a building to Independent Living that had a faulty roof.
Probably not, probably not. Yeah, the heat and air, that's a different thing, all the other things are, are pretty much wants on their part, uh, so, but this is something that needs to be taken care of, and I think that'd be an easy change for you, but, um, back to you all.
The leaseor shall not be responsible for any maintenance on the property during the initial term, which is ten years, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct, ten years, right?
Ten year.
However, leasee may request from time to time that leaseor provide assistance with the cost of maintenance, and leaseor will review said request to determine the extent of assistance.
Sure.
Is that a catch-all for the roof?
I think so.
That's it, that's it, that's it, I mean, that's the end of this.
Yeah, I mean, they can...
Is that a catch-all for the roof? That all they have to do is, once they got it, it's here, black and white, and all we gotta do is do a budget amendment.
The idea was to, yes, I mean, I think that's the general idea, that it gives the flexibility to the tenant, um, to come to the council if there's a problem.
Matt, are you comfortable with that?
I'm fine with it, uh, you know, I, I think we can trust you, you know, you guys to do the right thing, um, and, uh, you know, we'll work with you on it, but, uh...
Absolutely.
The assumption was, you know, it was a gentleman's agreement that you guys most likely take care of the roof. If you didn't, and we had to come up with the seven grand to do a temporary fix, you know, we could probably do that, but we'd rather not.
I like your attitude, but, you know, I can, I can guarantee you that two years from now, I will not be sitting in this seat, so I hope the council members that do respect the, respect the lease or about to agree with it. We got a motion on the, on the motion?
Uh, we did have.
Do you have a motion in a second?
Yeah, it was your...
I don't think there's anything to change, Wade.
I think you let it, Bill.
I don't think there's anything to change.
Okay.
Call for vote.
It's for you.
Okay.
Call for vote.
Okay, um, roll call, please.
Robert B. Lake?
Robert B. Lake, yes.
Joel Williams?
Joel Williams, yes.
Wayne Towne?
Wayne Towne, yes.
Jeremy Ragland?
Jeremy Ragland, yes.
Mary Jean Crigger?
Mary Jean Crigger, yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Mitch Magnus, yes.
Larry Phillips?
Larry Phillips, yes.
Phil Boswell?
Phil Boswell, yes.
Record shows a yes, zero no, motion carried.
All right.
Well, thank you all for your support and the damage, we sure appreciate it, and I think this is gonna turn into something that, uh, this community can all be proud of, so, thanks again.
Yeah, Bill, um, Matt Russell, uh, you might want to mention is the, uh, signing ceremony set for...
Yeah, um, you're all invited on Saturday, um...
Six.
The sixth, a week from this Saturday, uh, we're gonna have a open house at Camp Jack, along with a signing ceremony for the lease, and so you're all welcome, and, uh, I understand there's gonna be cupcakes, so that's something worth showing off.
Cupcakes.
Uh, please come down and join us and take a tour.
What time, Matt? What time?
Noon.
Noon?
Noon.
Noon, and the open house is between eleven and two, but the actual signing ceremony will be at noon.
That's my fellow Marine there baking cupcakes. Good job, Matt.
A little bit of mic sound.
We can start it.
Yeah, good deal, good deal, guys. Back to you, well, Wayne?
All right, the next one is the resolution, uh, approving the lease renewal for the property located at Seven Ten Air Force, which we're gonna give as fire station number three. And I didn't take a motion that we pass this resolution, so the mayor can sign this agreement.
Okay, got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Is this the same as it's always been?
It is, identical.
I think the price per square footage goes up just slightly, I assume that's because of cost of living increases, but...
There's real money exchanged, isn't there?
Airport?
Mark can probably answer that. I think they assigned a value to it. Mark, do you know the answer?
We don't get that in check, do we? Especially mine, for my...
No, no.
No, we're not. Um, I mean, we take care of, y'all talking about leases in the previous topics, uh, basically that building was ours to take care of, uh, we have a annual maintenance on it, but we did not pay any money to the county for that building.
Didn't it?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mark. Uh, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
I did not get who made the motion in a second.
That would have been Bill and Joel. They're kind of our motion and seconds tonight. Yes, sir.
Joel Williams?
Joel Williams, yes.
Wayne Towne?
Wayne Towne, yes.
Jeremy Ragland?
Jeremy Ragland, yes.
Mary Jean Crigger?
Mary Jean Crigger, yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Mitch Magnus, yes.
Larry Phillips?
Larry Phillips, yes.
Phil Boswell?
Phil Boswell, yes.
Robert B. Lake?
Robert B. Lake, yes.
Record will reply, a yes, zero no, motion carried.
Okay.
All right, our next resolution is dealing with the property of Fort Mission, Seven Ten North Robinson, to Independent Living Incorporated.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and discussion, or a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wayne Cohn.
Wayne Cohn, yes.
Jeremy Ragland.
Jeremy Ragland, yes.
Mary Jean Cracker.
Mary Jean Cracker, yes.
Mitch Magnus.
Mitch Magnus, yes.
Larry Phillips.
Larry Phillips, yes.
Phil Boswell.
Phil Boswell, yes.
Robert B. Lake.
Robert B. Lake, yes.
Joel Williams.
Joel Williams, yes.
Record will show a yes, zero no, motion carried.
All righty.
Let me get my computer screwed and lined up here so I can see something, uh, the next one, um, out of my committee is the three ordinances dealing with the community center, the free side community center, calling for a special election, and like I said, there are three, and my intent tonight is to have all three of these ordinances on all three meetings, and with these ordinances to be dealt with tonight, all three of them will have to go to three meetings tonight, and if for some reason, and direction, correct me if I'm wrong, if for some reason, one of the other, other ordinance doesn't make it through, that basically voids all three of them, right?
I'm, I'm not sure if that's right, I would probably defer to the bond attorney on, on that one, Luke was saying last week that there were some that perhaps it would've been fine, and Luke may know the answer to that question.
Yeah, that's a good question, Wayne, we have Ryan Bowman, our bond attorney, did you get that question, Ryan?
No, I think, I think as I understand the question is if it goes to the voters and one of them passes and the other doesn't, is that the question?
No, the question is if the council does not approve all three of these ordinances tonight, it will modify whatever doesn't pass.
Well, the first ordinance that will be on your agenda is the levy of a permanent quarter cent tax, and the second ordinance is calling the election on the levy of that tax, so if you did not adopt the second ordinance, then, you know, the first ordinance would not be effective because the voters have not had a chance to approve, uh, the levy of the tax, and then the third ordinance would completely stand, uh, on its own as well. So, to accomplish the purposes and the intent of the city, uh, then all three ordinances do need to be adopted at the same time, to put this matter on the ballot and made available.
It would have to be read separately.
Right.
Okay. All right.
All right, the first ordinance is coming up, and. Let me make sure I've got my stuff with you, I thought it was on the other. Excuse me, my fingers are hurting.
Sure, take your time, Wayne.
All right, the ordinance which you mentioned, the first one is gonna be coming up, the ordinance providing the levy of a one four, uh, a one percent sales and use tax of the city of Harrison, and, uh, at this time, I would ask for a motion to suspend the rule, place this ordinance on its first reading by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on this one? Okay?
Wayne?
Yes.
Did you make that motion, or did you ask?
I will make, I will make a motion.
Nice, Mitch Magnus seconded the motion.
Before we get in a big rush, push this thing through, I'm going to speak my piece, exactly like I did at the meeting, meeting two weeks ago, but I think, one, the project is excellent, two, I think the timing is terrible, and you're asking, you know, I, again, this is my opinion for what it for, I think the timing with us still being in the middle of the pandemic is not a good situation, we're gonna ask the people of Harris and Arkansas to raise, devote their taxes after we've already raised our water and sewer rates this year, and also their track rates, so we're going to, in essence, we're going to add a fourth tax increase to that, to the people that live within the city of Harrison, of course, we're gonna bank on the fact that the people that come into Harrison to shop are going to pick up the biggest tab on this thing, that may well be true, I just don't think the timing is good, I don't think the timing is good at all in any way, shape, or form, I appreciate Wayne, what you said in regards to having to push this thing through tonight, I also don't agree that there's an emergency, that's the reason you do three readings and whatnot, unless you can prove to me that there's an emergency, in this case, to push this through this evening, I do not see a reason to deal with three readings tonight, that's it, my opinion.
I, I have such utmost respect for Mr. Boswell and consider, the strong consideration what he, he, um, mentioned, my biggest concern, uh, two concerns I have, when we did the previous, uh, recreation center project, we had, uh, devoted a special meeting to it, and when we did the current construction of the, uh, public, new public, uh, safety building, administration building, we had a special meeting for it, this is a nineteen million dollar project, which is under half of the cost of the previous project, and we're putting it here at the end of the council meeting, and that's one thing that concerns Mr. Harrison Council, my other big concern, and it is the, the timing, while bad because of the pandemic and, and the water rates and other things, interest rates are going up, and if we wait, uh, if we're going to do this project, this is the time to do it, um, for that reason, if, if, if no other, I know that the school system has recently restructured all their notes, and on, uh, their, their bonds, uh, it's gonna save them four million dollars, so my guess is that if the rates go up, that it will cost the city approximately one to two million dollars more over the life of the project if we wait.
Good.
So, I give strong consideration to Mr. Boswell's comment, and, and I was even gonna ask Luke if he could make a comment in regard to those rates, uh, and for the bond attorney, if he didn't mind, as to what you think rates are gonna do.
Yeah, actually, uh, thank you for that, I think we actually have Paul Phillips on the call tonight, and Paul is, um, with Cruz and Associates, the underwriters, and he might be able to talk about interest rates, Paul, uh, I know Luke is prepared to, but if Paul's there, you might wanna say something? Thank you.
Mayor, thank you, uh, Mitch is absolutely correct, uh, we have witnessed in the last week an increase in interest rates, uh, about thirty basis points, and, and, uh, depending on where you are on the curve, but, uh, probably an additional five basis points increase today, so the market has moved significantly over the last week, um, just kind of for some modeling, we did look at where rates are roughly today based on current circumstances, and, um, analysis reflected that, uh, an increase of, of twenty-five basis points, top to bottom, so a quarter or fifth percent increase would add, um, a little over nine hundred twenty-five thousand dollars a year to your, to your, uh, overall debt service, uh, assuming so growth or decline in your tax collection, so, um, I, I think that's pretty close to what, uh, Mitch Magnus indicated too, in terms of, of, uh, rates increase, so it's a, is a increase by a quarter point, it's a pretty significant cost.
Yeah, and we're, right now, you're looking at low twos, uh, today anyway, is that correct?
We were looking at, uh, low twos at the beginning of, uh, February, just this, this, this move that we had in the last week has pushed this up to about the two-thirty rate.
Two-thirty, okay, which is still a wonderful number, so.
Oh, it's still, it is still a, uh, you know, still a very, very, very attractive rate of, you know, some of the lowest we've seen, uh, just, just a little bit hard to stomach when you just see that most of that movement's taking place here in the, in the last week.
And again, not to, not to be overreactive, the school district got their rate as low over one point eight percent.
Right.
And just think what that would mean in the, in the terms of the nineteen million dollar loan. So, you know, that, that would be my primary concern, but if, if we're going to do it as far as timing, even what happens in those basis points until we can lock that in.
Sure.
Is there any idea what we're talking about as far as the length of term until those rates can be locked?
It'd be May twelfth.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that would be the, that would be the day, we can lock them, is that correct, Paul?
Well, um.
After the election?
So you got an election proposed for May eleventh, and, um, after you certify those results, and, and then you could move toward, um, oh, probably be something in the early or something like a July closing.
So you're looking at July closing, yeah.
Yeah, there's definitely some interest rate risk during that period of time.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, okay, all right.
You probably could get the rates locked, um, toward the end of June, and then the July, late of July closing, something like that, is when you get the rates locked, is what matters to you, and so, um, that'd be where we would sell the bonds, go to councils, adopt the bond ordinance, and upon adoption of that, we sign bond purchase agreements that lock the interest rates.
What if one of, what, what if the, uh, quarter cent proposed for the, uh, sports complex improvements, so on and so forth, failed, but the quarter cent passes for parks and rent maintenance, the existing facilities, and whatever the definition is for economic development, does that drive on, is that over?
Now, that, that would continue, that would go, that would go into effect, if that one passed and the other one didn't, now if.
Is that what?
Yeah.
So, the, the permanent quarter cent tax and the temporary quarter cent tax is placed on physical bonds, so we're talking about two different quarters and taxes, if the permanent self-disposed tax passes and the tax for the bonds fails, then there would be levy, uh, that permanent quarter cent tax.
Right.
The only way to terminate that tax by statute is to go back to the voters to abolish that, so you would use that for, uh, parking recreational purposes and, and economic development. On the flip side of that, if the permanent quarter cent tax failed and the temporary quarter cent tax for the bonds were passed, then the council could choose whether to move forward with the bond issue for the project, it would take a two-thirds vote of the council to not move forward with the bond issue and to not levy that quarter cent temporary tax, but you, you certainly could move forward with the bond issue with the understanding that you would not have a quarter cent, uh, to operate and maintain your business.
Basically, you can build it, you just can't make plans, it'll fall, it'll.
Yeah, we would wanna accept it then, we, we really, I hope we wouldn't, if that would take place, um, okay?
And, uh, one point to be made, mentioning the special meeting, if we don't do the second and third reading on, tonight, on each of these three, we could call special meetings, but we have to do, what's our, Luke, you know our drop dead date, but we'd have to have it passed.
That'd be sixty days.
March tenth?
So, yeah.
March the tenth, basically.
Wow, you're on the core of it.
Yep, we'd have to have essentially two special meetings next week, to make sure we got everything in beforehand.
Sure.
So, I mean, the, the timing of it is bad from multiple angles, but it, it's also a perfect opportunity, this is the time to do it.
Yeah.
Um, and in discussion with Luke, if, if, if the interest rates were low, if the last time we did this, possibility, and I think this plan overall is better.
Oh, yes, sir.
Last time, it was kind of a, let's just see what we can do with this piece of property, this really fits into the scheme of our city in the park and the addition of the junior high property.
And Mitch, we worked very hard this last year to get what we've got now.
I've had people just very good stuff about, have you done a survey? Yes, my understanding is.
Yes, yes, sir.
And, and I, anytime we spend nineteen million dollars, that's why I think that citizens need to have this opportunity to vote on it and not me.
Correct.
Because.
And that's what we're asking.
Right, I'm not, I'm, I'm to the point where I wanna make sure that, you know, if I hold it up, I don't wanna be the one to hold it up and then later say, well, I was devoted to, to tell that possibility up, but you don't know what's in the future, but you don't know what these rates are gonna be in June.
Sure.
So.
Yes, sir, and we do, by the way, we do have plans to have a town hall meeting with the whole community, and we believe we can do it in a, in a COVID-approved way, now with the use of the junior high, uh, we can fit a lot of people in there still distance and wear masks in the old junior high.
You know, I'd like to have Luke speak to Ken and I both in the link with this and some of our meetings, in case I've missed any input to Ken and I discussed, and I am concerned about taxes, you know, I'm, I'm more fiscally frugal than, than, than vote, essentially, as a set, I think I, I have, I feel like I'm the gatekeeper for tax for the city, I know Luke is, but I feel that way as a citizen.
I agree, you are too.
So, Luke, is there anything that I've met, that I've not mentioned during our discussion?
Um, I think you covered a lot of it, obviously, interest rate risk is the, the biggest concern on ours, and especially talking to Paul today about, you know, the, the thirty point swing in interest rates, you know, that's, that's almost, it's actually over a billion dollars when, when we talked about going from the one nine eight that we talked about on February ninth, um, to today, I believe it's two three three, so, you know, thirty-five basis points, that's a, that's a lot, a huge swing, and, and, you know, we don't know what it's gonna do, if it doesn't begin, we're, we're, unfortunately, if we push it off, it would cost me taxpayer dollars, uh, in the long run, um, you know, we, we talked about, whenever these do get passed, you know, every city across the state, I won't say every city, but ninety-nine percent of the cities across the state, whenever they copy this process, most of the time the, the council actually puts it all through in one night, because it is the, the voters, it's up to the voters, you know, sixty plus days, um, down the road, and I don't, I actually reached out to Ryan to figure out if we were, you know, one of the only few cities that have not done that, so last time we didn't, um, and he said, yeah, we were one of, of very, very small few, um, that, that did not put it on three readings in one night to just pass through, so, um, and then just sales tax comparison in general, we're the lowest sales tax in cities our size, it's great, and, you know, everybody loves to have.
Listen to this.
Even if this, the two quarter cents get passed, if Mountain Home passes theirs in a week and a half, we would still be the lowest sales tax, I did some more research, the person that was actually lower, that would've been lower than us, passed the tax also, so even with the half cent tax, we'd still be the lowest city if Mountain Home passed there, so, I mean, we're trying to keep taxes low, that's part of the reason why we came back as a half cent versus a full cent, and, and so, we don't wanna be the highest tax, obviously, that's, when, we're not gonna be, I mean, it's up by eleven percent on, on some location, but, but nine and a half percent was still the lowest, uh, city of our size if not capacity there.
And, and again, to, to that point, the benefit of what this center, I hope, will bring, and it's even being as close to Camp Jack as it is, with the natatorium and the other, you know, pickleball court.
Yeah, the veterans.
You know, a veteran, you know, could possibly just stay down there all day long, you know, and so, I mean, for me, the half cent, I don't like taxes, but if I was gonna pay the half cent, the most important tax in the city, bar none, is the infrastructure tax, absolutely, I, I mean, you would see that immediately, and as, as much as we all are for the public safety tax, the infrastructure tax is the most important, but we were talking about incentive, if we build this, I think there's more incentives there for people to move to town and take advantage of the, of the developed mill, uh, incentives that we've proposed, than anything else, frankly, because, again, I, I've been in those meetings and, uh, where, or hosted individuals that are coming to town, and they ask us about the school, ask about the hospital, and then I tell them, see your parks and recreations, that's what they ask. So. So I am concerned. I, I share Mr. Boswell's concern. It makes me uncomfortable with the three readings in one night. I just don't see anyone around it.
I think we're back into a corner that we're going to have to do it that way. The other question would be from my standpoint is that the permanent sales tax is designated to go to parks and recreation for not only maintenance of the new facility, but existing facilities and economic development. Have we got a percentage? How are you going to split that up?
You know, when we first started, we had a percentage and that percentage was 3/16th and 1/16th. And then I believe it was talking to our bond attorney that he recommended we just do one quarter as a whole and then leave that percentage breakup to the council, uh, as, as going forward depending on the projects. But 1/16th and 3/16th is what we had in mind. But even then, it's, it would be up to the council to approve anything.
So you're talking about that, that discretion on a yearly basis would be through the budget, budget process.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
I'm just making that point.
Mm-hmm, but there would be one quarter total.
If you don't mind, um, because I know when I talk to Ryan, uh, you know, it's, it's very important to stress that what's currently in there is, is not a set percentage. And we did that for a couple, a couple reasons. But the mayor said, you know, we, we had an idea in mind of how we wanted to split it. But the last time we did that, we tied our hands so much that it took, I won't say an act of Congress, but it took a lot for us to get a bond passed, um, to build the public safety building. But we all know that the intent behind it was to allow us to build official facilities for the police and fire departments. We couldn't do that easily. And, and so whenever you restrict funding like that, it really ties your hands on what you can do with that. Now, we still have certain, or certain specifications that we have to deal with. Still got to go towards parks, still have to go towards economic development. So, but that will have to be voted on in the budget process on, on year-by-year basis of how that went. Now, we can indicate all day long that, you know, we hope that it goes this way, but to actually tie it down to a certain percentage would, would be very tough. You know, I mentioned last time, you know, if, if the community center does remarkably well, as we all think and hope it will, you know, maybe at some point in time it is self-sufficient, but I, I can't guarantee that, nor would, would most people say that's probably going to be the case. So having funding for that, if it was self-sufficient, then we wouldn't have to necessarily do that. But on the, on the flip side, if, if they need more, we, we need to be able to give them additional funding as well.
Well, I think it's equally important. I mean, we're not talking about just, if this passes, we're not talking about just maintenance for the facility. We're talking about maintenance of all the other facilities that have been under maintained for the last 25 years.
That's correct.
There's a lot of money.
That's a very good point.
That's a seven-digit figure right now. I know what that figure is. Mr. Magnus knows that it's a seven-digit figure for the maintenance work that needs to be done. It's not going to happen overnight. It's not going to happen all at one time. But that committee came through, it's what I was on the council before, and it was in the millions of dollars of what was going to have to be replaced and/or repaired. Am I right, sir?
Yes, sir.
So that, that fast burns that up, so.
Yeah, we got a lot of catching up to do.
Well, in the community, and, and, well, I don't mean to be on the soap, soapbox, but I think, and I've had so many discussions with people around town and regarding this. The city of Harrison, Boone County are on the precipice of either really big growth or possibly dropping back a little bit. And when you see other communities, and then our tax rate is going to be the, either the lowest or second lowest of communities our size. And if we can do that with the fiscal, we're trying to build something like this.
And still be the lowest or second lowest, yes.
It, it makes sense to say, well, why not? Why not do this now? It's, and again, I, I'm, I'm trying to build a home that my wife and I will one day live in, um, and it, it scares me right now. I'm begging the bank, finish it, you know, give me the loan now. Because it will add four or $500 a month if I wait till the year. You know, thank you. And as much as I love all the bankers in town, I don't want to give them any more.
Yeah, right.
One sitting next to you, say, Eve.
Yeah, there you go, Larry. Can you, sorry. Can you lock it in? Yeah, they can all lock it in. They just can't give you that low rate and lock it in.
They can lock it in today. You know what it was? It literally was offered like just under 2, like 1.97.
We sure, we sure hope, Mitch, excuse me, but, you know, this has been out to the public for about 30 days now. And, uh, the reception we've received has been so positive, so positive. I mean, you've seen probably what's been on Facebook, the people we talked to. We even have people that were strongly against it last time. That's not going to be strongly against it this time.
Mr. Mayor, and Bill Boswell, I'm frustrated that we're back into the corner. I'm, I'm frustrated.
In the timing factor.
Right, but, you know. And no decision, Council, I've said this before, no decision, if you're 100% sure on something or 100% against something, then it's something wrong. I actually take everything in there as long as 60-40 on that, or 70-30 on that, or whatever. Everybody loves Puffy, who's the most, Officer Jerry. But, you know, past that, I have strong reservations. And when someone mentions something to me, one of the comments made was that, were, you're the public safety building. Well, they're two different, completely different projects. They're not going to be the same contractor. They're going to be at different times. That's probably going to be done before this is even started. So, again, does that affect it? Well, oh, yeah, we're back to the end of the track. Okay?
Yeah.
Now, I. I'd like another, just comment real quick and apologize for, for jumping here every time, but, um, since you did bring up, you know, the other project that's in my background, as you can see, um, you know, yes, we do feel like it's going to be significantly completed by the time we could get started on that other, uh, project as well. However, uh, we feel more than capable and, and if you all know this person named Wade Phillips, um, you know, he's pretty good at that construction stuff. So, um, you know, we feel very good being in Wade's hands, you know, being able to manage projects. But also the fact that it's going to be, the, the community, community center would be several different projects. Um, you know, it's, it's something that could go on at the same time and not affect one or the other. We feel very confident that, that both of these projects could happen in through and see, and, and you'll see a lot of progress happening very, very quickly at the same with that.
Just think of what people coming back from Harrison that haven't been here in 10 years.
Oh, wow.
If they saw, if they saw the new public safety building and then turn around and see this, what are you guys going to do next?
And drive down the, the highway because we're going to, so many things are going to happen this year on Highway 65.
Right, $47 million in roads.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Dunkin' Donuts. I mean, that itself is going to be, wow! Uh, you know, I mean, they're going to see a ton of new stuff this year pop up. So, yeah, wow, you're right. It'd just be gone a couple of years and come back and they'll say, wow. Yeah, Southern's been good too. So it's been good everywhere. Sir?
Call for a vote.
Call for a vote. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, was there, was there a motion in the second?
Yes, there was. Um, help me out.
I made the vote.
Yes.
And I, I made the.
Wayne, yeah, that's right.
Mitch Magnus made the second, Wayne Cullen made the motion.
Yeah. Is that Ryan that was speaking?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right. Roll call.
Jeremy Ragland, yes.
Mary Jean Crigger.
Mary Jean Crigger, yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Mitch Magnus, yes.
Larry Phillips?
Larry Phillips, yes.
Bill Boswell?
Bill Boswell, no.
Robert Gulay?
Robert Gulay, yes.
Joe Williams?
Joel Williams, yes.
Wayne Cullen?
Wayne Cullen, yes.
Record will reflect seven yes, one no. Motion carries.
I'll read it now. An ordinance providing for the levy of a 1/4 of 1% sales and use tax within the city of Harrison, Arkansas, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, uh, suspend the rule, make a motion to suspend the rule and place the ordinance on its second and third reading by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mitch Magnus and a second by Wayne. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mary Jean Crigger?
Mary Jean Crigger, yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Mitch Magnus, yes.
Larry Phillips?
Larry Phillips, yes.
Bill Boswell?
Bill Boswell, no.
Robert Gulay?
Robert Gulay, yes.
Joe Williams?
Joel Williams, yes.
Wayne Cullen?
Wayne Cullen, yes.
Jeremy Ragland?
Jeremy Ragland, yes.
Record will show seven yes, one no. Motion carries.
An ordinance providing for the levy of a 1/4 of 1% sales and use tax within the city of Harrison, Arkansas, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Move to adopt. Second.
Okay, we got a motion to adopt by Wayne, second, was it Mitch?
Mitch.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Larry Phillips?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
No.
Robert Gulay?
Robert Gulay, yes.
Joe Williams?
Joel Williams, yes.
Wayne Cullen?
Wayne Cullen, yes.
Jeremy Ragland?
Jeremy Ragland, yes.
Mary Jean Crigger?
Mary Jean Crigger, yes.
Record will reflect seven yes, one no. Motion carries.
We need to enact emergency clause. There, there's no need for an emergency. So that said, I'd like to make a motion that we place the next ordinance calling for a special election in the city of Harrison on its first reading by, that we suspend the rule and place the ordinance for the, calling for a special election in the city of Harrison on its first reading by title only.
Okay.
Mayor, this is my amendment. Can I make one?
Yes, yes, please.
If, if Mr. Pratt could give us the ordinance number for the first ordinance that was adopted.
Okay, Jeff? I think he was expecting.
1479. So the first ordinance was 1479, thank you, Jeff. And so if you look at the first whereas clause of this ordinance, uh, there is actually an ordinance number 1448. That should instead read 1479, which references the ordinance that was just passed. So that was something I thought, that ordinance was incorrect, should be 1479. We would make that change in a copy of the ordinance that we have in the order.
Okay. All right, so now we're back to the motion in a second. Which one was that on?
That was on 1448 is what we're voting on now.
We're voting on 1448.
Past 1479 is on ordinance number 1448.
Uh, all right, 14, so this, this ordinance would be 148, okay?
Okay, yeah, we'll go in order.
And the first whereas clause of this ordinance should be 1479. It reads, it reads 1448 currently.
Oh, I got you. Okay, we're down to the whereas.
Do we need to change the motion?
I don't know. You didn't use that number. Okay, okay. I got you now. You see under the first whereas, we had 14, 1448. So we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Larry Phillips?
Larry Phillips, yes.
Bill Boswell?
Bill Boswell, no.
Robert Gulay?
Robert Gulay, yes.
Joe Williams?
Joel Williams, yes.
Wayne Cullen?
Wayne Cullen, yes.
Jeremy Ragland?
Jeremy Ragland, yes.
Mary Jean Crigger?
Mary Jean Crigger, yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Mitch Magnus, yes.
Record will reflect seven yes, one no. Motion carries.
An ordinance calling a special election in the city of Harrison, Arkansas on the question of levying a citywide 1/4 of 1% sales and use tax and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we place that same ordinance on its second and third reading by title only, that we suspend the rule and we place it on its second and third reading by title only.
Okay, we got a motion by Mitch and a second by Wayne. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bill Boswell?
Bill Boswell, no.
Robert Gulay?
Robert Gulay, yes.
Joe Williams?
Joel Williams, yes.
Wayne Cullen?
Wayne Cullen, yes.
Jeremy Ragland?
Jeremy Ragland, yes.
Mary Jean Crigger?
Mary Jean Crigger, yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Mitch Magnus, yes.
Larry Phillips?
Larry Phillips, yes.
Motion will show seven yes, one no. Motion carries.
An ordinance calling a special election in the city of Harrison, Arkansas on the question of levying a citywide 1/4 of 1% sales and use tax and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Motion for adoption. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt by Wayne, second by Mitch. Any discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Robert Gulay?
Robert Gulay, yes.
Joe Williams?
Joel Williams, yes.
Wayne Cullen?
Wayne Cullen, yes.
Jeremy Ragland?
Jeremy Ragland, yes.
Mary Jean Crigger?
Mary Jean Crigger, yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Mitch Magnus, yes.
Larry Phillips?
Larry Phillips, yes.
Bill Boswell?
Bill Boswell, no.
Record will show seven yes, one no. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we place an ordinance calling for a special, special election in the city of Harrison, that we suspend the rules and we place an ordinance calling for a special election in the city of Harrison on the question of issuing bonds under Amendment 62. Uh, like a motion that we set on that ordinance, place it on its first reading by title only.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Wayne, motion by Mitch. Uh, any discussion? Roll call, Jeff?
Yes, yes. Can I, can I fill in one more blank, please?
Sure.
The next and last whereas clause on the first page of this ordinance
Gotcha.
will again be completed by, uh, 1479.
Okay.
So there is a blank to rec, first ordinance that was adopted, that should be 1479, please.
Got you, thank you. Okay, roll call, Jeff?
Joe Williams?
Joel Williams, yes.
Wayne Cullen?
Wayne Cullen, yes.
Jeremy Ragland?
Jeremy Ragland, yes.
Mary Jean Crigger?
Mary Jean Crigger, yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Mitch Magnus, yes.
Larry Phillips?
Larry Phillips, yes.
Bill Boswell?
Bill Boswell, no.
Robert Gulay?
Robert Gulay, yes.
Record will show seven yes, one no. Motion carries.
An ordinance calling a special election in the city of Harrison, Arkansas on the question of issuing bonds under Amendment Number 62 to the Constitution of the State of Arkansas for the purpose of finan- state of Arkansas for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the costs of park and recreational facilities and improvements, levying a new one-fourth of one percent sales and use tax for the purpose of retiring such bonds and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and place the same ordinance on its second and third readings by title only.
Okay, we've got a motion by Mitch, second by Wayne, any discussion?
I'd like to make one comment at this time. I want to applaud Council member Bill Boswell on his conviction, and I understand his stance on this, and I want to publicly say how, the reverence I have for him and his position.
The reverence?
There you go, Bill.
That's taken.
There you go, Bill. And he's still wearing that Kansas City Chief mask, getting it. Well, thank you for that, Mitch. Where were we? Roll call, please.
Wayne Cullen.
Wayne Cullen, yes.
Jeremy Ragland.
Jeremy Ragland, yes.
Mary Jean Crager.
Mary Jean Crager, yes.
Mitch Magnus.
Mitch Magnus, yes.
Larry Phillips.
Larry Phillips, yes.
Bill Boswell.
Bill Boswell, no.
Robert Dulae.
Robert Dulae, yes.
Joe Williams.
Joel Williams, yes.
Record will show seven yes, one no, motion carries.
Motion to adopt, oh, sorry. Yep, I'll read it.
An ordinance calling a special election in the city of Harrison, Arkansas, on the question of issuing bonds under Amendment number sixty-two to the Constitution of the state of Arkansas for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the costs of park and recreational facilities and improvements, levying a new one-fourth of one percent sales and use tax for the purpose of retiring such bonds and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Motion to adopt, second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt by Mitch, second by Wayne, any further discussion? Roll call.
Jeremy Ragland, yes.
Mary Jean Crager.
Mary Jean Crager, yes.
Mitch Magnus.
Mitch Magnus, yes.
Larry Phillips.
Larry Phillips, yes.
Bill Boswell.
Bill Boswell, no.
Robert Dulae.
Robert Dulae, yes.
Joe Williams.
Joel Williams, yes.
Wayne Cullen.
Wayne Cullen, yes.
Record will show seven yes, one no, motion carries.
Before I turn it back over, Mayor, I just wanted to say, thanks to all my fellow council members for working on this building and this design, and I like Mitch, respect Bill for his stance on this, and I totally understand his support.
Thank you, thank you, Wayne, thank you all very much. Hopefully, this is a night of something big going forward. It'll be voted on here two and a half months from now, so we'll find out. And by the way, if you don't know, Mountain Home is voting starting Monday or Tuesday, I guess, Ryan, and their final vote is a week from Tuesday, so we're going to anxiously await what happens over in Mountain Home. I've got a few things we got to do, we still got some new business to cover, and I think this will go rather quickly. I have three people that I want to reappoint to the Planning Commission, and if we can vote on them, up or down vote, one at a time, I'd like to recommend Pat Brown, if I can get a.
Make a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Wayne and second by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Those three gentlemen have served the community in that role for a number of years, and I just think it's.
Yes, yeah, Pat and Floyd especially, and Bob's been excellent. These are three guys that have been there a long time and they want to continue to serve.
They have incredible knowledge.
And they're very engaged, so thank you, thanks for mentioning that. Floyd Baltimore.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Floyd Baltimore to the Planning Commission.
Okay, okay, we've got Wayne with the motion, Robert seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bob Dodson.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Bob Dodson to the Planning Commission.
And we've got Wayne and Mary Jean Crager got that second, so boy, they kind of blew through that one. That's his second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you for that. Hey, the coronavirus update, I want to tell you two things real quick. The numbers are falling like a rock, but people are not wearing masks. They seem like they've kind of given up on that. Around town, I have seen people lately just not wearing masks, and I hope, you know how strong we fought this, Luke, eight, ten months ago, you know, I hope we don't have to publicly fight it again, but folks, please, please, we're getting close, so let's do it. But the numbers, the high, high number in Boone County was on November twenty-second with two-hundred-and-eighty-five active cases in Boone County. I didn't see today, but yesterday was forty total. So, we went from two-eighty-five to forty. Wow, we're making some great progress, I think Boone County's doing excellent and the state of Arkansas is. We are covering, I think the process is going very well, I think we'll all agree to that. So, that's COVID. Now, I hate to put you through this because I know we need to go home, but I am required every year to give you a State of the City address by the end of February. Well, and I, and I should say this, I'm going to run through quickly our larger projects that we took on during 2020, and I won't elaborate much. We started the year, we were working on the Public Safety Building for a couple of months before COVID hit, we came out with a very, very aggressive campaign promoting precautionary measures of all kinds against COVID, and that lasted for months, and you know, we had pushback during that time, so it was not fun. Not only we had COVID to deal with, you know, we had different opinions on wearing masks and things of that nature. In May, we completed the Wonder Willa Park, Wonder Willa Play Ground, and that was one of the biggest things, I think, for the kids, so that was wonderful. In June, we had Black Lives Matter protests took place, we had two very successful peaceful protests, but it was one of the most horrific weeks leading up to it. I know we reported before on this, but what the law enforcement did during those two weeks prior to the protest was just unbelievable. All law enforcement agencies participated in keeping us safe, and they had, unfortunately, they didn't have to act, but they were ready if needed. In July, the video was posted, do you all remember the video? I don't remember the video. Everybody in the world has seen the video almost, it's been that widespread. We still receive calls and letters from people all over the country, they're still coming in every day, and you can imagine what they sound like. We had a huge support for Back the Blue. They had an event in the park that raised forty-five thousand dollars in one night for Back the Blue. We found a method, we think, to get rid of the geese. You that have been serving on this committee for a while, you know how important that is, especially now that we have the Wonder Willa Park down there. So, it's important that we get rid of the geese, and I think we found a way. In October, I had the privilege to join Dr. Bernice King in a one-hour virtual discussion all about Harrison. There were just four of us on the call, and it was all to discuss Harrison. Public Works and other contractors, people don't know it, but they've been working on the intersection of forty-three and sixty-five for most of last year. They're rerouting all the sewer and the water all the way around it, and they're, they're now eighty-five percent complete with that project, and we've got other projects going on, and hopefully in the next couple of months, you'll see the main construction take place. And we're going to be all excited to see that happen. We were able to take ownership of the old junior high. What a, what an amazing deal that was. You know, if we did nothing with it, it would be amazing, and if we're able to do something like we hope we can do, we couldn't have done it without it. Park and Rec, they became a department of the city. Chuck, how's it going so far? You're in two months.
Great.
You like it?
I like it.
Like it? Oh, Chuck, thank you, now, thanks a lot, Chuck. We have, really, the Parks people, we've gotten to know them pretty well, we've worked together with the people in the field and Jerry Farmer, and we've learned, and we've come together pretty good, no, no big issues, so good. We, we had several discussions last year about making the Armory the Veterans Support Center, and it looks like we're going to be able to do that, so that was a big accomplishment. This had nothing to do with the city, but Johnny Morris closed this on Dog Patch, I'd say that was a pretty big deal. Right? You betcha. Last part of the year, we continued to work on the Public Safety Building, and then we started work on Creekside Community Center. Folks, and I know the discussion came up earlier on how we can really do two big projects at once, if we didn't have the department heads we have, we would not be attempting these. We just, we couldn't do it. We have a team here, and Wade is a key player, but we have several others that are involved in these things and will be involved, so. Tax revenues were up eight percent in 2020. How about that? Who would have guessed? You know, if I, I remember back in April when all this stuff started, March, we were in trouble, we were going to, you know, city was going to be broke by the end of the year, and that's the way it looked like during March or April, the first couple of months, sales tax revenues were, were not good, but we made up ground and came out eight percent above, and we are really proud that we presented a balanced budget to you folks, so that was a good deal. So, all in all, as bad as things were with COVID, with other things that happened last year, the city got a lot done, and even though it's kind of lonely in this building now, and I mean it, it is, you know, we don't have people in here, there's no life in the building, it's just a few of us up here, and we want to get back to the days where there's life in the building, it feels so much better, but I think the city did a great job for you folks. And that's my report, and with that said.
Let's go home.
Okay, thank you all very much, no comments from the, Bob, I'm sorry, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, thank you, thank you for not having anything.
Yes.
All right, thank you all very much.